Good evening, Thousand Oaks. We're going to have the, start the Planning Commission meeting for September 21st, 2020. I want to let everybody at home know that the commissioners and most of the public are participating via telethon conference or video conference to assist the city in trying to maintain social distancing. Let's start by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united, peaceful, without borders, equal, fair, and just.
With the Recording Secretary, please call the role.
Commissioner Bus.
Present.
Commissioner Kohan.
Here.
Commissioner McMahon.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Present.
And Chair Lanson.
And I am here as well. Item four, Mr. Parker, do we have any written comments, announcements, supplemental packets, or continuances?
We do, Chair. We have two supplemental packets this evening that relate to item 7A and 7B on the agenda. Copies are available on the dais for you and as well as for commissioners at home.
And I believe all of us got those, so, and I confirmed actually before the meeting, all the commissioners got those packets. Number five, public comments. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No.
We will then go to item six, which is the consent calendar, which contains the minutes with regard to the August 24th, 2020 meeting. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions, or a motion with regard to the minutes?
I move that we go ahead and approve those minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bus. Any other comments from commissioners? Madam Secretary, please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bus.
Aye.
Commissioner Kohan.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Chair Lanson.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We will now go on to item seven, and specifically 7A. Madam Secretary, would you please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, Continuance of Appeal of Development Permit Minor Modification Number DPMN 2020-70184. Appellant is requesting the Planning Commission reverse the administrative decision approving DPMN 2020-70184, thereby denying the request to upgrade an existing wireless communications facility located at 1 Amgen Center Drive, B27. The appellant is Mandy Jacob. The applicant is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company by AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, its manager.
Thank you. I think we have presenting for the staff, Associate Planner Will Chua.
Good evening, Chair Lanson, members of the commission. For your consideration tonight is a request to reverse an administrative decision by an administrative hearing officer that approved DPMN 2020-70184. Approval of the appeal will deny the request to upgrade the facility. Denial of the appeal will uphold the approval of the administrative hearing officer. The facility is located at 1 Amgen Center Drive. This is the vicinity map of the property, of the project site. This has been to Park Road. There is a residential area to the northeast, to the north and northeast area of the, of the project site. The rest to the, to the east, west, and south, I mean, I'm sorry, west, south, and east of the property are mostly industrial projects or areas. This is the area for the subject facility. The involved facility here is located here on this equipment enclosure. The antennas are, one of the sectors located here. This is the side that's closest to the residential properties, which is to the northeast on Fox Springs. This is approximate, these antennas at the face are approximately 960 to about 1,000 feet away from the nearest home to the northeast side on Fox Springs. This appeal requires Planning Commission review because Section 9-4.2807 of the municipal code allows appeal of an administrative decision to the Planning Commission within 10 days of the decision. The project was processed administratively in accordance with Resolution 97-197, which is the city's standards and guidelines for installation of wireless communications facilities. The, the project is administratively approved or processed and processed because it's located in a commercial or industrial zone. During the notification, a opposition was received. The administrative hearing was conducted. The admin decision during that administrative hearing is now being appealed before the Planning As a matter of background for the project, the Amgen corporate building that's involved in this was approved in 1979 for construction. In 2009, the applicant applied for a minor modification to allow a wireless communications facility for installed on the rooftop. In 2014, a design review was approved for facility upgrade. The details are all in the staff report. In early March of this year, the applicant filed another minor modification for upgrade to the existing facility. And in March 2026, the notification was sent out to property owners within 500 feet of the project site. The staff receive a letter of, I mean, an email of opposition from the appellant. On June 25, the, an administrative hearing was conducted. And in that, during that hearing, the administrative hearing officer found that the project is consistent with Resolution 97-197, and it has demonstrated plant compliance with the federal guidelines on RF or radio frequency, and that the project is exempt under, as a Class 1 exemption under CEQA. On June 30, 2020, the, the appellant filed an appeal. The, the proposed site plan, this is the proposed site plan for the project. The equipment cabinet is located on the ground floor of the building on the east side. The, the equip, the antennas are located on the rooftop, one here, one here, and one here. This, this antenna here on this, on the east side is the closest to the residential areas, which is about, like I said, it's about 960, 960 feet away. The antennas, the, certain equipment cabinets will be installed within the equipment room, and others like TMA's tower mounted amplifiers, RRUs, which is the remote radio units, would be installed behind the equipment enclosure. And the antennas would be on the face, the existing antennas are on the face of the equipment enclosure with an FRP, which is a fiberglass reinforced plastic that will shield them from public view. This is an elevation of the project. This shows the, the antenn, like I said before, the antennas are currently installed on the face of the equipment enclosure. Those are here, and there's a, there's an FRP or fiber reinforced plastic that's covering the antennas from public view. This FRP is painted to me, to match the color of the, the enclosure. And here's the other elevation. The, the facility was evaluated based on the compliance with the city's wireless standards. The, the facility is currently installed on an existing structure, and it's fully hidden from public view, which is the main requirements for the city's 97-197. The applicant submitted an RF report, RF EMI report that demonstrates plant compliance with FCC guidelines, and Mr. Kramer will be explaining this later. This is the, this table is just to give you an idea of what's existing and what's being opposed. The 12 panel antennas, some of them are being removed and some are being replaced. The TMA's will be totally removed, so there will be no tower mounted amplifiers left. RRUs, some of them would be removed and replaced, and the total RRUs would be 12, so that's an increase of two or three RRUs. There will be an additional one, search suppressor, winder box, same number, distributive units would be removed, and there will be three baseband units that would be installed. The appellant has, has stated that the grounds for appeal are as follows. First off, approval of this project was beyond the authority of the hearing officer, and it's violation, and in violation of California law because of the following, that the listed applicant is not an entity registered to do business in the state of California. Yukon Group, which is representing AT&amp;T, does not have legal authority to file an application for any other entity, and granting of the permit renders the indemnification condition meaningless and unenforceable. Staff would be responding to all those grounds of appeal. In response to what the applicant pointed out, section, the, there's a Thousand Oaks Municipal Code section which is listed on the screen, which grants the decision-making authority to the community development director or his designee for certain applications. These applications are administrative applications that we, such as precise plan of design and minor modifications. In this case, the applicant, the committee director has designated the administrative hearing officer to make a decision on this project. The, another section allows the filing of an entitlement application by a Lisi who holds a written lease, provided that the lease allows the use that's being applied for. In this case, the applicant has an agreement with Amgen for the wireless communications The, the city accepts applications from third parties. These third parties includes architects, contractors, and other consultants on behalf of property owners and, and other business owners. This has been, this has been a standard practice for the city. In case of the final approval for the document, the final approval, which is an attachment to the staff report, reflects the applicant's or the permit's name, which is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, and they will be responsible for the, for condition compliance. Yukon stated that AT&amp;T's name, the actual AT&amp;T name, is New Singular Wireless PCS. This is what will, is reflected in the approval document that is signed by the hearing officer, and this is also reflected on the attachment for, which is the proposed resolution for Planning Commission if the Planning Commission decides to uphold the hearing officer's approval. After the approval, the applicant will be required to sign and submit an acceptance condition which holds them legally, which legally binds them to the conditions of approval for this, for this project. The applicant is correct, I mean, I'm sorry, the appellant is correct in terms of having a duly registered entity as the applicant in the approval letter, and the staff has made the changes and make sure that in future approvals, that the name reflected on all the applications and documents will be that of a legal entity. Staff has obtained a copy of the certificate of status from the Office of California's Secretary of State, which is Attachment 9, page 106 of your staff report, which indicates that AT&amp;T is, is legal to, it's legal for AT&amp;T to conduct business in the state of This project is categorically exempt from CEQA under Class 1, which is alteration of existing facilities. Before I go to the conclusion, I would like to turn this presentation over to Mr. Dr. Jonathan Kramer.
Good evening, Planning, good evening, Planning Commission, Jonathan Kramer. My firm has reviewed this project as we do for all of them, and the project fully complies with the FCC rules as for RF safety. The project also is consistent with 97-197. We found really, this was such a minor project because it has no visible impact. From our standpoint, it clears with no question, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. This project has been evaluated in terms of the city's wireless standards, and it complies because none of the element, none of the elements of these wireless facilities will be, will be visible from public view, which is the number one requirement for 97-197. The applicant has demonstrated, and confirmed by Dr. Kramer, that, that has, that has demonstrated, the applicant has demonstrated plant compliance with FCC's RF emission standards, and the applicant name, which is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, is identified in the approval Based on compliance with all standards, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission deny the appeal, upholding the hearing officer's decision for DPMN 20-70184. Again, denying of the appeal will, will approve the project, and approving the appeal will deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. I'm going to go to commissioners in a second, but I just want one clarification we do on, that I normally do on these. Is any of the, the facilities being installed a 5G type infrastructure, or is this all 4G?
This is all 4G.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Commissioner Lanson.
Commissioner Newman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been an AT&amp;T shareholder predating my time on the commission, so I should accuse myself here. Even though I believe, whether I believe, I can hear the case impartially, or whether California law allows me to hear the case, doesn't really matter. There's at least the appearance of a conflict here, so I will sit this one out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Other commissioners, questions for staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes, is this, is this facility for the benefit of the Amgen campus or for all of Newbury Park?
That is, that is a question that I would defer to the applicant.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
...conflict here, so I will sit this one out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman.
We're getting reverberation a little bit. Commissioner Bus or Commissioner Kohan, did you have any questions?
I am good. I will, I will pass this time.
Okay. With that, we're going to go to the appellant, which is, I'm sorry.
Hold on, I'm trying to unmute.
Somebody needs to mute because we're hearing reverberation of my voice, and I hear enough of my voice as it is. Thank you. We're going to go to the appellant, which is Mandy Jacob and her attorney, Mark Pollak, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Mark Pollak. Can you hear me?
We absolutely can.
Oh, good. Well, initially, Commissioner and Chairman of the Commission, thank you for accommodating me on my request to continue this matter because we had wildfires up here in Napa and Solano County, and we were unable to breathe. So with that currently resolved, I'd like to address what has been referenced by Mr. Chua in the staff report. We filed this appeal initially because the applicant, at the time that the zoning administrator approved the application, was simply AT&amp;T, quote, AT&amp;T, close quote. AT&amp;T, as I expressed in my written materials, is not an authorized entity to do business within the state of California. It is not registered to do business in the state of California. There are approximately 12 corporations and 20 limited liability companies registered with the state of California under the name AT&amp;T. Attached to the brief which I submitted to you are copies of printouts from the California Secretary of State website showing each of the entities who incorporates AT&amp;T as part of their business name, both LLCs and corporations. So the question, which I've raised in the appeal, is this: If AT&amp;T, whichever entity it is, wants to go forward with this procedure, with this application, and obtain a permit in its name, then it needs to identify which lawful AT&amp;T entity is granted the permit by the city of Thousand Oaks. There are two reasons why this should concern you. One is that there is an indemnity and insurance provision as part of the permit process, and so you want to be sure that the entity who you are granting the permit to actually exists, so that in the event that lawsuits result, in the event that there is fire or conflagration, in the event that there is negligence and they exceed the FCC regulated standards for RF emissions, and someone gets ill and sues, you want to be sure that whoever is indemnifying the city is an actual legal entity that can fulfill that obligation under its contract and under its permit. The next issue which I'd like to raise is that the entity which purports to file the application on behalf of this unnamed AT&amp;T entity is AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation. AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation is allegedly the manager of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, and they come forward acting with Yukon Group to file this application. AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation is a Delaware corporation not authorized to do business within the state of California. Anything they do is void and invalid. Any documents submitted to you by that entity is not valid in the state of California. Furthermore, any authorization by that entity under the name of AT&amp;T, close quote, for Yukon Group to come forward and represent New Singular Wireless PCS on behalf of them on this application is similarly void and invalid under California law. Now, I've raised that by virtue of the document that I filed with this Planning Commission. I provided hard copies of printouts from the Secretary of State website to substantiate our position. In response to what we have done, now I'm informed at this meeting by Mr. Chua that the application has been changed, and it's now my understanding that the application and the permit will be in the name of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. If that is correct, then that is legal, and if that is how you have responded to this appeal, I would suggest in all fairness that you refund to my client, Mandy Jacob, the appellate fee that she paid for the privilege of being in front of this body and informing you of the fact that there was a loophole that left the city unprotected. She did you a favor, and you're making her pay for that by being present here and paying that fee for this appeal. And I think in all fairness, if you've changed the application and you've made it legal and enforceable, then I think her appellate fee should be refunded. The next issue which I would like to raise regards NEPA analysis. The National Environmental Policy Act is the federal equivalent of CEQA, which you're all familiar with. Under the United Kewa Band of Cherokee Indians versus Oklahoma FCC 933-F3728, the Court of Appeals required the FCC to require NEPA analysis of small cell technology placement throughout the United States. Accordingly, since that analysis must be done and submitted to the FCC, you have a right to ask the applicant to provide proof that they have essentially complied with the requirements under United Kewa and submitted such an analysis to the FCC. That would include cumulative impacts of small cell deployment, like the one that is intended to be modified under this application and the permit. Finally, as I pointed out in our materials, the applicant is constructing a facility that will emit radio frequency, and that my client has a radio sensitivity syndrome, which allows her to raise claims under ADA, and she has raised those claims in the appellate brief which I filed with you, and I believe that her health concerns regarding the radio frequency emissions from this facility should be considered and evaluated under the ADA. Now, I know enough from the history of this body to have risked, to have listened previously to Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer, forgive me, and I understand his position, which is that under 47 U.S.C., Section 332(c)(7(b)(4), that you are that you are not entitled to consider health effects of radio frequency emissions regarding the deployment, maintenance, or modification of any facility. And I would submit to you that that is a mischaracterization of federal law. What the section actually says is that you may not consider environmental effects of radio frequency emission. It never mentions health effects. Now, what is the distinction? The distinction is this. It's very simple and I'm sure each of you will understand it. Environmental effects are those effects that impact the external, the environment. Health effects are those effects which affect the inside of a human body, the interior. Therefore, you have the right and the ability to evaluate the radio frequency emissions or the possibility for negligent radio frequency emissions as they impact an individual with radio sensitivity syndrome under the ADA. And on that basis, I would submit it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. You still have five minutes. Did Ms. Jacobs want to comment herself?
I would give that time to Ms. Jacobs.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. I'm going to just put on my video. Thank you, Mark, for putting it so eloquently and thank you, Commissioners, for listening to me tonight. Basically, all I wanted to say is I'm firstly appalled to find out about this. I think that's why I'm professional. If I'm appealing this, I shouldn't be finding out on the spot that the application has been changed, which just goes down to the fact that honestly, you meet with these telecom industries all the time in person. We've been begging for a year and a half to meet with you in person and that in itself needs questioning. So let me just begin by saying I am microwave sick. I've been clinically diagnosed by an ICD-10 code. My physician has given the letter to the city attorney. I raised this issue a year ago already when I gave my ADA request to the city attorney. And you sit here now in default and we are sitting in a position which I didn't want to be in to begin with. But again, the city is negligent. They're trying to make this entire process go away. So my community backs up to Amgen and I'm not the only microwave sick person that has been clinically diagnosed that has lodged a complaint with the city attorney. Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer over here loves to tell us that Title 47 USC code has nothing and no mention, and we have this on record of the ADA, when in fact he has not read Section 255 and 300 with both a look at the ADA. The ADA is instituted by the U.S. Access Board and has higher credibility than FCC. I would like to go on to the fact, I'm talking about Dr. Kramer. When I first spoke to you a year ago with the Dr. Tetchian case, which now has been administered, the writ of mandamus against the City of Thousand Oaks, and we appealed to you to please don't make this become a lawsuit, it was then that Dr. Kramer told us that there was no such thing that had to, you did not have to worry about the ADA, which I've just said, please go and read the title. You'll see it there for yourself, Section 255 and 300. He also mentioned that there was no such thing as NEPA. We know that the 9th of August 2019, the second highest court in the land district said that in fact every application needs a NEPA review. And to back this up now, the writ of mandamus that has been leveraged on the city has been fighting on that forefront as well and that looks like it's coming through. Again, we, we have the reputation of Dr. Kramer at, you know, at a past year. First, last time I spoke to you, I told you that the judge kicked out his case with AT&amp;T versus Carlsbad because he sided with the telecoms. And then now he's got a track record. Now the City of Malibu, who has hired the regulators who have won against the FCC, they have drafted, and this is part of the public records that I submitted, they have drafted all their complaints about the misinformation that Kramer has given them. He's not the only litigator. Harry Lehman, a very well-known litigator, has also racked up a lot of misinformation that your consultant is telling you because he is not reading the Title 47 USC code. So you have all these issues happening and yet we still go back to what Dr. Kramer says. I don't understand why Dr. Kramer is there when we have even better, Thousand Oaks residents, more professional, we've got Professor Trevor Marshall, who has the same technical degree that Dr. Kramer has and then is now working with the BioInitiative as a scientist who is offered to meet with everyone face to face to talk about this, the responsible rollout. Instead of making your residents sicker, we can have these towers. We're not saying don't have them. We're asking you not to have them near residential areas where people like me are sick already and are going to get sicker. And unfortunately, what happens is it, it, it snowballs. You want this problem to go away? We came a year and a half ago and we asked for this. Anyway, there's so many different things that I want you to know. The first city attorney has been reported to the bar exam for the negligence and misinformation up in Northern California and the case has been already, we have all the evidence against Dr. Kramer. So I would question why you go to Dr. Kramer when you can go to Professor Marshall. Carol Teketa, the doctor who wrote this chapter on Surgeon General's Report where smoking causes cancer, has now just been published about radiation causing cancer.
You have about 10 seconds.
She's willing to, free of charge, willing to talk to you, but nothing gets done. Look at Los Altos. They've had 13 lawsuits against them by the telecoms and you know what? It costs the city nothing. It's 45 days and what can you do? You can deny the appeal.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jacobs, you're out of time. Ms. Jacob, you're out of time.
Okay, just one last thing. All you have to do is prove lack of coverage. And I've done the drive-by testing with AT&amp;T and have managed to make cellphone calls in that area. So the coverage is there. You have every availability.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, council, commissioners, questions for the appellant? Mr. Pollak or Ms. Jacob? Hearing none, I will ask a quick one of Mr. Pollak. The, the case you cited with regard to the NEPA issue, Chipewa Indians, that, was that a 5G case, correct?
No. That was a small cell technology rollout under 4G.
Well, it's a small cell technology and the facility here, is this a small cell facility? To your knowledge?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Okay. And again, looking at the way that you framed your, your letter, it says the city may require. So in your opinion, it's a discretionary issue that the city may require it, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. On the ADA issue, I, I understand the distinction you're trying to raise as to environmental or health. Have you found any statute, case law, legislative authority, anything that actually makes that distinction?
No, sir, I have not.
All right, I have no further questions. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, with that, we will then go to the applicant, who will have 15 minutes themselves. And I believe we have Melissa Keith? Or Matthew?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Hello. Hi. Good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the time to allow me to speak tonight. I have two written statements that I would like to read. One is overarchingly explaining the scope of the work and, and the general plans for the project. And the other statement has to do with responding to the appeal letter that was filed for the project. So I'll go ahead and. My name is Melissa Keith and I am here on behalf of Yukon Group, an SFC Communications, Inc. company, representing a proposed wireless modification project located at 1 Amgen Center Drive, Thousand Oaks, California, 91320. The wireless company applying for the modification is AT&amp;T, otherwise known as New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company by AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, its manager. AT&amp;T is proposing to modify their existing facility by removing nine antennas and replacing with seven new antennas, removing six RRUs and replacing with 12 new RRUs and removing 12 TMAs on the existing building's rooftop. The scope of work also consists of removing two existing baseband units noted as DUS-41s and replacing with three new baseband units referred to as BBU-6630 within the site's existing equipment room. Additionally, one new DC-12 surge suppressor will be installed also within the existing equipment room. The site is located on the rooftop of an 85-foot building within a manufacturing zone. The antennas are divided across three different sectors. Sector A is mounted onto the building's existing penthouse while Sector B and C are mounted onto the building's mechanical enclosure. Each sector is located behind FRP streaming material designed to blend the antennas into the building's existing settings. For this modification, AT&amp;T would like to utilize this opportunity to reduce the amount of materials on-site by removing antennas and, and equipment that are no longer necessary for meeting current technological needs. In doing so, all antennas and equipment will continue to remain behind the site's existing FRP streams. The facility's leasing dimensions will not change in any aspect. The height of the wireless facility and the height of the overall building will remain the same. The site will not undergo any substantial change in appearance. This is evidenced by the plans and photo simulations that have been submitted for the subject application. Swapping out antennas and equipment is a fairly standard procedure for existing wireless facilities as this ensures that sites remain up to date in meeting technological needs. In this case, AT&amp;T's update is required to improve the overall 4G user experience by installing technology designed to meet capacity needs in this area of the city. I would like to emphasize that this is an existing site and the modification's purpose will serve to offload capacity for AT&amp;T users. Instead of building an entirely new facility, it is of preference to modify sites with existing entitlements and lease agreements in which antennas and equipment are swapped out. I would also like to highlight that this upgrade will include FirstNet technology, which is a network designed to provide first responders with access to fast and reliable communications whenever needed. This modification will help first responders to stay safe throughout their work as they help others in their daily operations. And it will also help them in addressing disaster response and recovery situations in a timely manner. Keeping up with telecommunications needs is crucial as this modification shall contribute to the quality of the city's overall infrastructure and will also ensure that network coverage services are adequately met. As the applicant representatives, we have worked closely with our planner, Wilfred Ochua, to ensure that the site and its proposal complies with jurisdictional requirements maintained by the city and the federal government. By modifying an existing facility, removing any unneeded equipment and ensuring that the site does not undergo any substantial change in appearance, we believe that a due diligence effort has been made to meet the City of Thousand Oaks' requirements for updating telecommunications facilities. It is for these reasons that we would like to request the city's approval to modify AT&amp;T's existing site located at 1 Amgen Center Drive. And then I will go ahead and read the response to the appeal. Honorable Commissioners, this letter is in response to the appeal brought by Marcus Pollak, Pollak and James LLP as attorney for Mandy Jacob, a resident of the City of Thousand Oaks. On June 25th, 2020, the City of Thousand Oaks Community Development Department approved by administrative hearing, applicant's minor modification permit number DPMMN 2020-70184 to allow for the upgrade to an existing wireless communications facility, a copy of which is attached here to as attachment one. The approved permit in the name of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company as the applicant, and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC is registered to do business in the state of California. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, is an indirect 100% owned subsidiary of AT&amp;T, Inc. Therefore, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC as the applicant does not render the indemnity condition, item four of the permit, meaningless or unforeseeable. With respect to Yukon Group's authorization to file the application on behalf of applicant, Yukon Group does in fact have the authorization from the applicant and has filed a letter of authorization with the City of Thousand Oaks. A letter of authorization is not an authenticated document, nor does it purport to give a power of attorney, but merely is a document under which one person or entity authorizes another person or entity to do a particular act for a specific purpose. Such purpose here being the collecting or submitting documents on behalf of the applicant. In conclusion, and for these reasons stated above, applicant respectfully requests that the commission deny appellant's request to set aside the approved permit and recommend approval thereof. And I would also like to just touch on a few questions that have been brought up. Well, first of all, I'd actually like to clarify that this is not small cell technology. This is a, what we call a macro site, so it is not small cell technology. And I would also like to respond to a question that was brought up regarding who would receive the coverage and the coverage would address about a 1,000, approximately 1,000-foot radius from the site. And as it relates to NEPA requirements, I sent a NEPA report to our planner, Wilfred Ochua, in response to a concern from the appellant. And it's a NEPA report from 2015. And I think with, with regard to this modification, it qualified for NEPA exemption. That is all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Keith. Was there a Matthew Walsh, Welsh, excuse me, that also wanted to make any comments? I believe he was from Amgen.
I am on, but I'll have no comment.
Okay. And just for clarity, I believe that what Ms. Keith was referring to with regard to the NEPA information was in packet two. Is that correct, Mr. Parker?
That is correct.
Mr. Pollak, I don't know if you had a chance to see that, but it was put up on the website. It is labeled as packet, supplemental packet number two. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I just want to clarify, make sure I've got the two things straight. One, this is not by definition a small cell facility, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my second question was that I think we just established the NEPA from 2015 that we have in our packets is still good or still valid at this point without any alteration. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bus. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, we have no other public comment with regard to the matter, so we'll go back to staff for follow-up.
Thank you, Chair Lanson. I just want to make a clarification that regarding the, the information that Mr. Pollak and Ms. Mandy Jacobs brought up regarding being told right now that the application has been changed. During the administrative hearing back in June, this, this became a, and this, this, they already brought up this issue back then, so when staff created the letter of approval that was signed by, by the administrative hearing officer, we indicated the legal name of AT&amp;T, which is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is part of the attachment that we provided the commission. It's attachment number seven, which is page 100 of your, of your staff report. And this indicates New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware limited liability company by AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, its manager. And this was sent out to the applicant and the appellant when this was signed by the, by the administrative hearing officer. So in effect, the applicant should have, I mean, the appellant should have known by reading this that we made the change to reflect the legal name for AT&amp;T. As far as the rest of the claim that was made, I believe that Dr. Kramer will have some, some, will, will be addressing some issues and I'm turning this over to Dr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. I think, first I'll say that it is and should be a I think, first I'll say that it is and should be apparent to the planning commission that I wouldn't say and haven't said to this planning commission or to the public that you can't evaluate RF safety, can't talk about it. In fact, we do that for virtually every project that comes before you and every project that goes in front of the ZA. And that's why in your staff report, you'll see a report from my office regarding RF safety compliance. We do this for every project. The correct statement of law is, once planned compliance is demonstrated, then it's no longer an issue for the planning commissioner or for the city. That's the stopping point. It's not that we can't talk about it. In fact, we talk about it pretty much at every single hearing on wireless sites. In terms of this being a small site, Ms. Keith has already identified that it's not, and I'll confirm that because the FCC has very specific rules as to what constitutes a small cell site, and in this case, the antennas are larger than that maximum permitted. So, as a, just a purely factual issue, this is not a small cell. As for the coverage, looking at the coverage maps, it primarily serves the Amgen campus and some areas around it, but that's what cell sites do these days. With the development of wireless facilities, coverage per cell site decreases, and that's to increase the network capacity. That's as far as technical I get. Regarding NEPA, although there's been a NEPA report submitted, one really wouldn't be required here because this is not a federal project. It's on federal land. That's what the United Kewa case was regarding, and that's because Indian lands are federal lands. So, that's not applicable here, hasn't been before or after the decision. With Ms. Jacobs, her comment about siding with the telecoms, I'm known to side with the telecoms when they're right, and I'm known to side with the public, the local government when it's right. One of the things about being an expert is you don't pick a side and only stand that side. You pick the truth and you work on the truth to make sure that the correct information goes to the people who make the decisions. So, to the extent that I say things like, "The project complies with the FCC rules and therefore it's out of your jurisdiction to make any decisions based on that," that's based on the law. That's not based on my side. This is the problem with the polarization. Ms. Jacobs also made some interesting comments about having the evidence. Perhaps she was referring to the case in Simi Valley where residents sued Simi Valley over a cell site issue, wireless issue, and in fact, one of the requests was that I actually be administratively fired for advising the city on the law correctly. And of course, that case was thrown out of court in January of this year. So, it's easy to make claims, but you know, when you get down to the facts, it's a little bit more than that. I think that's what I have, and of course, I will answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer.
Chair, if I may.
Oh, yes.
I do think, based on some of the comments that were made tonight, I think it does require some response by my office just because I heard us mentioned. A number of things. One of them is you heard the appellant state that they first heard about, or they implied that they first heard about this new name tonight or when this new application came in. That is not true as we had the administrative hearing. We specifically discussed it because it was brought to our attention before, and when it was brought to our attention, we made sure that AT&amp;T, because we generally call AT&amp;T, Inc., AT&amp;T, say specifically in Southern California, what is the entity that we need to issue the permit in. And Mr. Pollak, when he made that comment before at the administrative hearing, he is correct. We want to make sure that our identification clause or any clause that we have, any contract that you have, any agreement that you have with any entity, that you have the correct entity. And many times when we cite cases, and we all do this, we might say Verizon versus City and County of San Francisco, or AT&amp;T versus, you know, City of Richmond. When it comes to the actual technical citation, you actually correctly cite the entire name of the entity that's involved, right? Same with the contract. In this case, we notified them. It was discussed at the administrative hearing. It was discussed before the appeal. Hey, make sure we understand, we do have the name. We've confirmed that they are licensed to do business in California. We got this information from both Yukon and AT&amp;T. This is the name we're using. So, that is an important factor that I think the Commissioners need to understand that we did express that. It wasn't, this is not a new thing. With Yukon, I think we've already passed that. They have, they're a consultant. They file applications numerous times in our city and cities across Southern California, and they are not, at the end of the day, the person who's signing off on the permits, signing off on the agreement. That is the entity, whether it's a property owner or the wireless facility operator itself. You also heard Dr. Kramer make the comment about NEPA and SEQA. Let's be very clear that we do a SEQA analysis in this. We did a SEQA analysis in this. Again, for California, the environmental review is going to be the SEQA. And for NEPA, the fact is that sometimes you do apply NEPA analysis when there's a federal property involved. You can, in fact, you can make an applicant do both a NEPA and a SEQA on certain federal property kind of situations. You might see that in a land use issue involving a railroad, for example, where they're crossing into a city, but also they have federal obligations as well. In this case, we did SEQA. Now, you heard tonight, and this is in response to the supplemental that the appellant did last week when he submitted the supplemental with two new arguments. One was the NEPA argument, the second one was the ADA argument. These were in addition to the first two that he had in his appeal, initial appeal. And you saw AT&amp;T's response in the supplemental number two tonight, and that is that they actually had done a NEPA because FCC is the one that controls a NEPA evaluation. And so, they did that. And again, like SEQA, when you look at this particular type of case, the fact that it's a wireless facility, a remodel, if you will, a modification on top of a building, the SEQA analysis and the NEPA analysis, both of them are going to be very simple because there's not a great environmental impact. The building's already there. The facility's already there. So, that analysis is done, very important, it is done, but it's one in which we find, usually find an exemption, and that's the case for the SEQA, and that was the case for the NEPA that AT&amp;T provided in the supplemental. The last one has to do with ADA, and you heard Ms. Jacobs, she made a comment, and again, I normally wouldn't bring this up, but it does, it is important to make the record clear. And the record is that she did talk to the city attorney's office about ADA issues. We have responded multiple times. The last one was in May of this year, May 5th, 2020, in which we responded to her application request, and we were very specific in our response to her. She is aware of that as she received it, and we made our position clear to her about her issue. The ADA issue is an interesting one, but the fact is that it goes back down to, and both Mr. Pollak and Dr. Kramer and even the representatives from AT&amp;T note this, that when you look at the ADA, you first have to look at what is the reason for this application? What are they addressing? And they're addressing the fact that the RF emissions have an impact on them. So, we have to look at those RF emissions. And our inquiry, as Dr. Kramer has repeatedly said, and as the current law is clear, is, does it meet the federal guidelines for the RF emissions? And we hired Dr. Kramer, we hired his office for the city to ensure that it does. And if it doesn't, guess what we do? We say this application can't go forward because it doesn't meet the RF emission requirements. But of course, entity is going to do that because they need to do that to ensure that they get application because everybody knows that it must meet those requirements. So, we did that in this case. Once we do that, it's very clear in, and Mr. Pollak mentioned it and Dr. Kramer mentioned it, and it is, I can give you the citation if you want, but the fact is when you look at that subsection, it's very clear that if it's about RF emissions, a denial of that based on that reason is improper, right? It's not recommended because it's about the RF emission issue. Okay. So, the last thing I will say is that you heard a comment about the environmental analysis versus the health analysis. Dr. Kramer's office recently provided some comments, and I've looked at this case, and there is, when you look at the FCC and you look at the RF emissions under the code, as used in the statute, environmental effects include health concerns about the biological effects of RF radiation. That's T-Mobile N E LLC versus Town of Ramapo, and that's a federal S 701, excuse me, FSEP 701 FSEP second 446 on page 460. So, we do this analysis because it is important. We know it's important for individuals. We do our best to ensure that these applications meet these requirements. But again, when it comes to the RF emission aspect, I sound like a broken record, I'm sure to you, Chair, but it is something in which it gets out of our hands when it comes to that.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Is there anything further? With that, we'll go to Commissioner questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner McMahon.
I have one question for Dr. Kramer and then one for staff, Mr. Chua. Dr. Kramer, my original question was, was this facility for mostly for Amgen or was it for the Newbury Park community? And you said that it was about 1,000 feet, that RF emissions would go out about 1,000 feet. So, generally, it was for Amgen. And then we were informed that the nearest house is just under 1,000 feet. Can I get from that that the houses are generally not going to get any of those emissions?
No, you can't get that from it because radio waves don't just stop at a particular distance. They tend to fade. That's a function of what's called the inverse square law. You have to understand there's a difference between how far the radio waves travel and the primary area that a wireless carrier wants to cover from a particular site, and there's overlaps. So, while the primary benefit will be the Amgen campus, there will be areas around the campus that will also receive enhanced services, but that's not the proposed primary reason for this site. And that's not uncommon, to use a double negative. Sites are put in where there is a need for additional capacity or where there is weak coverage. I don't think there's weak coverage here, but the need for additional capacity is really what AT&amp;T is going for at this site.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chua, Ms., our appellant had said that there were other complaints other than hers, and I was wondering if you had any that were, that came to your office?
Nobody has came to my office, but there are some people who expressed interest in this application. Some of them has expressed a negative opinion of it, some of them have no opinion of it and would just like to be added to the either mailing list or the notification list. I don't know if we have anybody on Zoom right now that's part of those because I believe that we sent out emails for the original application to about five or six other people.
So, there were perhaps five or six other people that expressed concern?
Not necessarily concerned. Some of them are interested. There's one of them that probably, yeah, that expressed negative, but not all of them are against the project.
And was any of this in writing or was it just phone calls?
Some of them were phone calls. Some of them sent me an email indicating that they want to be part of the notification, which I forwarded to the planning secretary, and I believe they were part of the notification for this hearing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Buss.
Thank you. Dr. Kramer, I just had one question about the actual facility itself. It's on top of a building at Amgen. I assume that building is occupied, and I was curious if your study involves the radio wave effects on people inside the building, if that's it.
Well, our study doesn't consider the effects on people inside the building. It concerns itself with, does the emission going towards the building comply with the FCC rules? Because again, that's the standard.
Exactly. That's actually my question. Thank you for finishing and phrasing it correctly for me.
And we did, and this is a non-issue.
Copy that. Thank you. I had a second question for Mr. Hager, actually.
He's listening.
Okay, my question is, so we established early on that Singular Wireless is the actual applicant and the city's covered, correct?
That is correct. We put that name in the permit, and if you want the full name, I think it is in the packet. I'm sure I have it.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Okay. It's New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, and that is somewhere that's on the permit.
Okay. My question would be, you said that the appellant was aware of this prior to them filing their appeal. Their attorney just told us that they may not, that they were unaware of that. Is any of that fall into our purview as far as something we should be considering? Do we have any impact on that?
I would say, I would say the answer is not really. I think I wanted to make the record clear because we did discuss it during the administrative hearing, and I had a conversation after the hearing to ensure that he was aware of this specific issue, that I just wanted to be, have clarity for him, that we did put the name down, and it was New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. And so, that's why I just wanted to clear the record tonight just because I heard that and I heard the other comments, and I wanted to make sure that we had a clean record from our position. Again, it's really, it's nothing for you in the sense that there's no decision for you tonight that would be on that particular request, I don't think.
Copy that. I was just trying to establish whether or not we are capable of issuing refunds or if that's something that's in our purview.
I would say no. It's not in your purview this time.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, Commissioner Conde? Do you have any questions?
No further questions for me. Thank you.
All right. I had a quick one going back to this process. So, I mean, this is for Dr. Kramer. We're looking at this as a de novo review, I think as Mr. Pollak indicated in his letter. So, I'm looking at all the different elements, including the last one, which is the ADA issue that Mr. Hager kind of addressed, and I wanted to ask Mr. Kramer, on this environmental issue, are you aware of any statute legislative authority, anything that actually indicates there's a distinction between environmental or health effects?
No.
And along that line, is there anything that you're aware of as part of the Telecommunication Act that would allow us as a planning commission or even the city council to make an exemption from RF, or of these types of applications because of an ADA issue?
No.
Okay. Those were all my questions. Any other questions from the Commissioners?
No.
So, we will go back then to the appellant for five minutes, and that's Mr. Pollak and Ms. Jacob. You have five minutes to provide any rebuttal you'd like.
Well, let's see. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good. You probably can't see me because the sun is setting up here in Napa. So, I was not present with Ms. Jacobs at the zoning administrator hearing on this matter. I was retained after that hearing to file this brief with the commission, and I did so. It's based on the record that I had at the time. I was not provided with the information by Mr. Chua or anyone else electronically, telephonically, or in any other manner other than being told this evening that you had changed the name on the application. Otherwise, I would have addressed it directly in my brief. So, I feel like I've been sandbagged by you people, and quite frankly, I think it's a little bit offensive. I'm a professional, you're professionals. This isn't a hide the ball game. Quite frankly, my client filed this appeal with you because we are concerned not only about the facility, but about the legal standing of this city. about the facility, but about the legal standing of this city and its ability to be protected by adequate insurance and adequate requirement for hold harmless and indemnity by a contractor. The fact that the city attorney thinks you don't have the authority to refund the appellate's deposit brings into question what authority you do have, in my mind. Are you simply a yes and no stamp here on the application? Or do you have authority to control your own due process? I would submit to you with all deference to counsel, and I'm sure counsel has a basis for, for his opinion, that you do have the rational authority to refund the amount that my client paid for this appeal. Additionally, I would point out that the authorization, which has been filed by Yukon Group, is the last piece of paper attached to my appellate brief. And if you look at it, it says, "To whom it may concern, this letter will serve to notify and verify to the recipient that Yukon Group located at 65 Post and the address, including its employees and agents, is authorized to negotiate lease license and amendment terms on behalf of AT&amp;T," not New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is the applicant here. In addition, the signatory, the individual granting the authority, is identified as Ryan Young, Senior Tech Project Manager, Comma, Construction and Engineering, and doesn't list what entity that person is employed by. This thing is a useless piece of paper, and I think you need to make, make the same changes to the authorization requirement that you have now made to the application. The authorization for Yukon Group or any engineer acting on behalf of the applicant should be a valid authorization, identifying the company giving the authorization and listing the entity that is granting the authorization. On that basis, I would submit it. And thank you again for considering our position.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. I hope the lack of lights is not because of the fire effects. I hope you're okay.
I can go outside as long as I don't inhale.
Then do that. Commissioners, any further last questions for the appellant, the applicant, or staff?
May I just take those last 48 seconds?
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Ms. Jacob.
Is that okay? Thank you so much. Mr. Bass and Mr. Lanson, brilliant questions. And we can go down rabbit holes, but my basic question to you is, as a resident of your city, I am sick. I am getting sicker. I did the only recourse I knew to give an ADA request to the city attorney. We end up, of all places in Thousand Oaks, with the cell tower outside my house that Dr. Kramer has initiated and has said that is going to radiate my house. I am going to get sicker. What does that leave for me? Do I now have to sue the city? The city is already being sued by a microwave sick person, Greg Tetchian, and the writ of mandamus is out. Dr. Kramer, that case is not kicked out. In fact, the judge in Simi Valley said, "Go home and see how many times the city council people have said their hands are tied because their hands are not tied."
You had about 10 seconds.
Evidence. So why are we, anyway, I don't want to go into details. I want to ask you, what am I to do? I'm a sick resident asking you to look after me.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. As I hit the wrong button. With that, we will go ahead and close the, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioners, any other questions?
If I may, Chair, you also need to talk to the applicant.
Oh, for the rebuttal for the applicant. Ms. Keith, did you have any rebuttal that you would like to provide?
Nothing in too much depth. I mean, I just want to reiterate that the letter of authorization is, is really meant for the purpose of collecting or submitting documents on behalf of the applicant, which in this case is AT&amp;T, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. And I just want to confirm that we also noted within the conditions of approval that the, the applicant and representative names were amended to show the, the legal names. I just want to confirm that I did receive that.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Keith. Again, one last call for commi, oh, Mr. Chua has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to make a clarification with what Attorney Pollak has brought up. As far as I remember, as far as I understand what he said, he said that the, he was not told that the name on the application was changed. The name on the application was in fact not changed. So what we did was, we actually wrote the legal name of AT&amp;T on the approval letter. We did not change, just for the record, we did not change the name on the application itself. Thank you, Chair.
Excuse me, Chair Lanson. I'd like to chime in here for a quick moment. I was at the administrative hearing and it was, it was conducted virtually through Zoom. There was a number of speakers, including Mr. Pollak, who did attend the meeting. He's, he represented Ms. Jacob and opposed the project at that hearing. In fact, in their grounds for appeal, they have a statement in there stating that Yukon Group contended at the hearing that the actual applicant was New Singular Wireless PCS LLC with AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation as its manager. So that's actually in their form. But I just want to clarify that as regard, regarding the, the appeal fees, those appeal fees are designed to cover these hearings and an appropriate time to request any sort of refund would have been prior to the hearing. Instead, the planning commission does not have the ability to issue a refund.
Thank you. Anything further from staff? Any questions from the commissioners?
Is it time to make a comment?
Not yet.
Okay.
I've got one question for, for Ms. Keith.
Commissioner Bass.
The letter that, from Yukon, from the project manager, you're saying is not a power of attorney, it is more a letter of introduction? What is, what, because obviously this letter is in contention with Mr. Pollak.
Yeah, it's actually a requirement within the City of Thousand Oaks wireless communication application is that we have to submit a letter of authorization from the project owner. So we have to submit a letter of authorization from the property owner and the project owner. And so the letter of authorization with AT&amp;T signatures is our letter from the project owner.
Copy that. And then, Mr. Chua, so that letter is legitimate or does it need to be altered?
It's legitimate.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bass. Any other questions from the commissioners? Anything else from staff? All right. At this point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and invite discussion by the commissioners and/or a motion.
I would like to make a comment.
Commissioner McMahon.
Something that was said is bothering me. The applicant's attorney is, is saying that they should get their, their application fees refunded because of the name change. In my mind, they're not withdrawing their application, their appeal. If they were to withdraw their appeal, then I think that could be considered. But they're still appealing, so they need to pay their fees. And I, and it just bothers me that, that he brings this up as, as if he's been wronged or they've been wronged, and that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Other comments, discussion from commissioners or a motion? If not, I can make a quick comment myself. I'll call myself. With regard to the name issue, I appreciate that concern. In fact, that's one of the first things that I always look at at every single application is exactly who is the applicant, are they authorized to do business? And I can tell you, half the time, the name is a holding name. And ultimately, whatever name of the developer or whatever name the applicant sometimes does change. And that is a very common thing that I did not understand until I got into this process and seeing what ends up happening. I also understand this, that wireless telecommunications companies have lots of subsidiaries and that ultimately, it's the, the entity that's going to sign on the dotted line is the one that's going to actually be an authorized entity, which is exactly what's happened here. It's not necessarily something that makes sense to a lot of people, but that actually is a very common issue. And again, I want to actually thank Ms. Jacob and Mr. Pollak for pointing that out to make sure the staff then found it and make sure that we actually have that correct entity listed as part of this process. And that's kind of what this whole due diligence process is, of making sure that we have things accurate in terms of how the applications are supposed to go forward. So I don't, I don't have a problem with the name issue. I know it was frustrating, but I don't personally have a problem with the name issue. As to the fee refund, I mean, if there was a withdrawal, like Commissioner McMahon said, I'd feel better. But in fact, I spent probably a good part of my weekend researching the additional items that were indicated in Mr. Pollak's letter that were a de novo review. They were above and beyond those comments in the appeal. If there was an indication that that was being withdrawn at that time, fine. But it was part of the work that I actually had to do. And again, I'm not looking for compensation. I'm just basically saying is I actually gave it a very involved process. I spent hours trying to find distinctions between environmental and health effects and stuff like that. So I gave Ms. Jacob every attempt to try to find stuff. I don't know if you remember, Ms. Jacob, but again, I had a daughter that was born during electromagnetic issue after the 94 earthquake. I am very sensitive to this, and believe me, I wish there was something we could do to find a way to, as a planning commission, challenge the FCC and, and other federal government agencies with regard to this issue. But anyway, so that's my take with regard to the, the refund issue. Commissioners, any other comments or a motion?
All right. I put my glasses on. So before I comment, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we adopt the resolution denying the appeal, thereby upholding the administrative approval of development permit, minor modification, DPMN 2020-70184. Because I'll have to read that. My comment is, I don't see anything that's been presented at this point that is actionable for us as the planning commission to change this decision. And I think that we've all expressed that we wish that we had greater latitude, but the way the federal laws are written, we're, we're stuck where we are. The reality is, is that most of that involves the appearance of it and seeing there is going to be no change in appearance for this facility. I think that everybody else is doing their due diligence, and I find the same.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bass. Any other comments from commissioners? I'll just add an additional concept, and again, this is always what I go back to, is what's our function? And we're not a legislative body, we're not a judicial body, we're an executive body that's charged with enforcing the rules and regulations. What's being asked here is to essentially is challenge federal law, which I don't think I have as a planning commission the ability to do. That's a fight that has to take place in a different arena. So with that, I will support that motion. Any other comments from commissioners before we get ready for a vote? Not hearing any? Madam Secretary, please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bass?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes. As this is a decision, determination, I have to give the notice with regard to appeal. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Next item is item 7B. Recording Secretary, will you please open the public hearing?
And for the record, the, the motion carried 4-0 with Newman recused.
Oh, should we first invite Mr. Commissioner Newman back in? Go ahead and open 7B when you get a chance.
Okay. Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 7B, special use permit, minor modification, SUMN 2020-70422, to allow expansion of an existing helipad, including removal of three parking spaces on the rooftop of the parking structure at Los Robles Hospital. The subject property is located at 215 West Jan's Road and is zoned PL, public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities. The applicant is Los Robles Hospital and Medical Center.
Thank you. I believe we have Senior Planner Laura Young presenting.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Lanson and members of the planning commission. Tonight, we have a request from Los Robles Hospital to expand their existing helipad on top of the parking structure there at the hospital. And the reason is to accommodate their new emergency helicopters so that they could land there. Here's a vicinity map, and the hospital is bordered by Jan's on the south, Lynn Road to the west, and there's Sidley Street is to the north and Young Avenue to the west. This gives you a better view of the hospital. Here's the parking structure. Jan's Road's bordered on the south side. As you could see, there's a lot of residential uses to the north, which backs up to the hospital on Sidley and to the west of Young Avenue. There's also residential, as you go down Jan's Road to the east and to the west. We have medical office uses immediately to the west of the hospital. And here's the Chinese Christian Church to the south. There's also some residential, which is up on the hill on the south side of Jan's Road. Here's a view of the hospital, the entrance of the hospital from the top of the parking structure. Here's a site plan of the hospital. Here's the main entrance where you come in. Here's the main hospital and the turnaround. Here's the parking structure, and you could see here where the helipad is. Here's a view looking at the helipad, and you could see that it cantilevers over the parking. And with the extension, it's going to expand out to about where that white car is. And this is looking northeast a little bit. This is looking northwest at the helipad. And here's a view of the helipad looking southeast. And there's one looking towards the hospital. Here's a plan showing the orange area, which is clouded here. This is where the existing helipad takes up the area. And it's about 50 by 50. It'll be extended to 65 by eight, 68 feet. So it's about an increase of 1,900 square feet. And it'll come around here, and they're going to add the netting that goes around. The new emergency access stairway will be right here on the west side. And in order to put that there, they're going to have to remove three parking spaces. The hospital will also be upgrading the lighting to LED lights and adding some additional illuminators for, I guess, nighttime flying. The reason for the expansion is so that an adequate landing area can be provided for the new Firehawk helicopters that the county has purchased. They have purchased two of these helicopters. They're converted military Black Hawk helicopters, and these are faster and can carry three times the amount of water. They will be augmenting their They will be augmenting their existing fleet of Bell Huey UH-1 helicopters, which are like Vietnam era, and they've been flying them for decades. And from what they've advised us, it's, you know, getting harder to find parts and they're becoming expensive to maintain. So these Firehawks will be an asset to their fleet. And they're known for their superior firefighting capabilities. These helicopters has also been modified so that they can do search and rescue missions and then if they're out there and there's an emergency and a firefighter needs to get to the hospital right away, they can transport them to the hospital. The county will still rely on the smaller helicopters for medical transport. So it's important to remember that the Firehawks are only going to be landing here for emergencies if they need it. But most of the, the transport and landing at the hospital will be the same from, from This project started in August 2019 when they submitted their minor mod application. The notice of application went out and city received an objection letter. So an admin hearing was scheduled. It was conducted on May 28th of this year and the project was approved by the administrative hearing officer. And there were no appeals to that decision. In July, a report was submitted to the council as a consent item, which was advising them of the administrative approval of the helipad expansion. City council received the report of the project and approved it, approved the consent calendar. The next step was the applicant submitted an application for a heliport permit to the Caltrans Division of Aeronautics with the documentation that the city council was advised of the approval of the helipad expansion. Caltrans did not accept the documentation and would not issue the permit. They stated that the heliport permit application has to include some kind of documentation, resolution that states the city council approved the project. And typically, minor mods are processed at the staff level. So this is sort of a different kind of unique process because in this case, the Caltrans is sort of directing them to, to go to the city council. Typically, land use entitlements require planning commission approval first before they go on to the city council. So your role tonight is to make a recommendation on this request to the city council. One of the concerns is with the helicopters was noise and what kind of impacts from, you know, bringing in a new helicopter. And so the applicant hired Meridian consultants to analyze what kind of impacts would there be compared to the ambient noise in the surrounding sensitive land uses. And it was found that the increase in noise would be negligible and that the noise levels from the project would be below the noise thresholds considered to be significant by the city of Thousand Oaks. This project qualified as a Class 1 categorical exemption and Class 1 consists of minor alterations involving, you know, minimal expansion of use. And in this case, the enlargement of the helipad will not affect operations or impact the parking So in conclusion, Los Robles Hospital is the only Level 2 trauma center in East Ventura County. And this helipad is integral part of the region's emergency response network. The air traffic to the, to the hospital will remain the same. Same airplanes, you know, that usually come in and transport people. The only difference here is that the county has purchased these newer airplanes mainly for firefighting purposes. But in case they need to, they would be able to transport trauma victims and get the immediate Noise study was done and the helicopter noise to surrounding residential land uses was found not to be significant. There would be no change to air traffic or the flight pass. As I mentioned, the primary focus for the air, for the helicopter is for fighting fires and that the public benefit to the community outweighs any kind of, you know, minimal impacts that will come from these helicopters landing. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Commissioners, questions for staff?
Chair Bronson?
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Ms. Young, for your report. In the run-up to this hearing, the staff report mentioned a letter to the city council that stated that there was no public expenditure involved with the helipad. So I just want to double check, is that still the case that this, that this project does not involve any expenditure or public funds?
Yes, that's true. The hospital will be paying for expanding the helipad.
Very good, thank you. And then regarding the noise study that was done, if I read it correctly, I believe it was done using software modeling, building a model of the noise environment around the hospital and comparing the impacts of the current helicopters versus the Firehawks. It did not, well, my question is, did it involve any actual helicopter flights of either the Hueys or the Firehawks?
Yes, I'm not a noise expert and their noise consultant is here, but yes, they did do some noise studies with real helicopters.
Oh, they did, alright.
Maybe you want to talk to them specifically?
Okay, great.
Yes, they do some kind of modeling, computer modeling.
Okay, I'll follow up with the applicant on that. That's all, thanks very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Other commissioner questions?
I had one.
Commissioner McMahon?
In the report, it says, "The latest project at the hospital is currently under construction and consists of new exit discharge corridor renovation and expansion of the emergency department, expansion and renovation of the surgery department, relocation and renovation of imaging services." And the parking analysis evaluated these changes. With these expansions, are there, is there more parking added somewhere else to make up for these expansions and also losing the three parking spaces in the structure?
Yes, there are.
Do you happen to know where those spaces are going to be?
They're, they're located throughout and because, you know, it's a tight site, they were added where there was room to add those. But yes, there's enough parking for that and the applicant knew that they would be coming in with this project. So that's why they incorporated those changes in the parking count at that time to make sure that they had enough parking.
Do you know how many spaces are going to be added?
Offhand, I don't have it with me, but there are surplus spaces after the parking study was done.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Any other commissioner questions?
I had, I had just a question regarding the report. I noticed the statistics regarding the Firehawks' fire capacity for firefighting. Is the hospital a water pickup site in the event that we have fires locally?
You should ask the applicant, I'm not sure about that. I doubt it.
Okay, I was just curious because it was, it was one of the things that was put into the report and, and you mentioned it as well, so I was just curious how that, how that impacts our, our thoughts about this.
Any other questions, Vice Chair Buss?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I just had the, the brief one. Aside from the letter from Ms. Martin, which is in the supplemental packet and she's on the list of speakers, I hope she's there. Did you receive any other written objections?
No.
And in our packet also were letters from Sheriff Ayub and others in support. Did you have any other letters in support aside from what's in the packet?
No, those are it.
Okay. With that, I have no further questions, so we will go on to the applicant, which is going to be led by Austin Manning and a bunch of other people I'm sure he will introduce. You have 15 minutes.
Thank you all, this is, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. This is Austin Manning, I'm the chief operating officer here at Los Robles Health System and I want to thank each of you for taking the time this evening to hear us and I want to thank the city council for approving this project. As I think Lori has done a good job of outlining the project, we're here to address the technicality with Caltrans. And so again, appreciate your time tonight. I think rather than repeat what Lori has said, I'd point out just the fact that I think for us as a, as a Level 2 trauma center on the east end of the county, when the Ventura County Air Unit approached us about adding the capacity, they had concerns, the fact that no one else in the county at this point can accommodate these helicopters. And so for us as the health system on the east end of the county, we want to make sure that we partner with our first responders and certainly given the challenges that we as a state are currently facing with fires, I want to make sure that we are in a, we're positioned to take care of either those first responders that need to be taken care of or those individuals who may encounter trauma. I think Lori also to reiterate what she has said, we don't anticipate that this will increase either the traffic to the helipad, nor will it change in a material way the types of helicopters landing on the helipad. We are not, to address the question from one of the commissioners, a water pickup site. I think the, the point there is simply that these helicopters will be used primarily to fight fires. And so with that, I'll turn the, the presentation over to Brian Briscoe to give just a quick update on details.
One thing for each person testifying, could you actually just say your city of residence before you speak?
Certainly, I apologize, I'm in Thousand Oaks.
Who was next?
Hi, this is Brian Briscoe, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. What's your city of residence?
City of residence, Dallas, Texas.
Great, go ahead.
And I'm one of the architects working on the expansion project here with Los Robles. And real briefly, just wanted to share a little bit of the fundamental details of the project. This is a image of the nearby site for Los Robles Regional Medical Center and the location of the existing helipad, plan for upgrade. As you're aware, Los Robles Health System is Ventura County's only trauma center Level 2 and current environment, as you know, severity of wildfire activity is recently increasing in Thousand Oaks area. And medical center is undertaking these costs to enlarge the helipad to support the county emergency abilities to respond and be a part of key community preparedness and being a part of a community service here. So real briefly, on the left image, you can see the existing helipad on top of the parking structure and on the right, the conceptual plan, which makes it slightly larger and relatively in the same location. Currently, it's a 50 foot by 50 foot heliport and the dimensions will change to a 65 foot to 65 foot and that's in order to support two county Firehawk helicopters in, in the event of emergency care support. And Chris Kirkian, who is with Meridian Consultants, who was retained by us to help perform the noise study back in, it was completed in May, will briefly do a summary on it.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can hear.
Yes.
My name is Chris Kirkian, Director of Air Quality and Acoustics with Meridian Consultants. We're based out of Westlake Village. Yeah, so we recently, we prepared a noise study that assessed the information that the project needed to essentially establish and maintain the noise standards to within acceptable limits. So to answer the previous question, yes, the, the model did analyze the current two helicopters that are currently operating at the site, which is the Bell helicopter and the UH-1. And additionally, the, the model was also assessed the proposed helicopter in the event the Firehawk or Blackhawk was arrived at the site, those noise levels were also assessed. Additionally, yes, we did measure noise levels of the current operation with and without helicopters and so we were kind of able to reciprocate the, those results. Based on the findings, we were able to find that noise level increases in the event the, you know, the proposed Firehawk and Blackhawk helicopters were arrived to the site, that those noise levels would remain in acceptable limits.
We've included as part of the packet several letters from local agencies, Public Health, the sheriff's office and Fire Protection District and also have additional letters both from public and community parties that we'd be happy to share with the city if that's of interest to you. But aside from that, I'll just stop there and thank the planning commission for your time this evening and we'll wait to take further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to ask a quick question. Did you get a chance to see the supplement in our materials, which included the letters in support, but also from one, well, we'll get to the speaker if she can add that, I just didn't know if you guys had a chance to see that? And I guess not. So we'll, we'll get to that as we go through it. Is there anything else the applicant wishes to present? Mr. Manning, is that it?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, great. We'll open it up to commissioner questions.
No.
Commissioners, any questions?
I'm good at this time. Actually, I take that back, I do have a question.
Commissioner Buss?
The applicant. In the city summary, it was 65 by 68. You just presented and said it's 65 by 65. Which is it? Which, what size is this helipad? Just to make sure that we're approving the correct thing. I'll leave it open to anybody, anybody wants to answer it.
Brian? Brian, will you please address that?
Brian's muted, so.
I think I was just unmuted. It is, what's in the application package?
65 by 68. Okay, copy that. Okay, so you guys just have to typo. No problem, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions for the applicant? So I'll just ask the general one, which obviously is, I'm looking at Ms. Martin's letter, but you, you can't obviously definitively tell us how many trips per week, month, whatever the, the Blackhawk's going to take. Do you have any, is there any regularly scheduled times that the Blackhawk will be landing at the hospital on a regular basis?
We had that conversation with Ventura County Air Unit and the answer to that is no. There is no regularly scheduled trips to the, to the hospital.
So this is only in the event it's needed for a very specific circumstance, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
And is the noise... Again, I'm not asking you to make the sound of a helicopter, but is there a distinctive difference in the sounds between the Huey and the Blackhawk?
Chris, do you want to address that question, please?
Hi, Chris here. So yes, based on the noise study results, there are increases between the current uses of the Bell helicopter and the UH-1 and in the event that the Sikorsky Firehawk would arrive to the site. Our analysis provided both the CNEL values, which is the 24-hour average, and that one-minute exposure. And so based on land use purposes for compatibility, cities and other jurisdictions, we tend to look at CNEL and LDM. For informational purposes, we also provided the one-minute averages just to kind of show what those noise levels would be at the time that the helicopter would arrive. So to answer the question in short, yes, there are increases in noise levels from the Firehawk, but those increases from the noise levels will still remain in those acceptable limits.
Where would the Blackhawks mostly be coming from? I mean, obviously, they're landing for purposes of emergency evacuations or treatment, but where are they coming from generally?
That would depend based on either the needs from a firefighting standpoint and/or search and rescue.
Okay. I have nothing further at the moment. Any other Commissioner questions? All right, so we will go then to, I think, our public speakers. I believe we have two listed. Now we go to public comments. We have two, which are participating by either video conference or phone. Each speaker will have five minutes. Please state your name, city of residence. I think first is Karen Martin. Are you there?
Good evening. Thank you, yes. And Lori, they're helicopters, they're not airplanes, dear. And as far as the person in Dallas, it's not the only Level 2 Trauma Center in Ventura County. There is also one in Ventura. So there are two, actually. This is just the one in East County. I live in the western flight path to Los Robles. And in 2014, I started calling the hospital, the sheriff, the FAA, just about anyone who would listen, about low-flying helicopters over my home into Los Robles Hospital. I have a 250-foot Sequoia, and they flew beside it. That was six years ago, or six years after the expansion. Now they're a trauma and stroke center, nobody seems to remember that, and want to enlarge their helipad. The noise element in 2000 promises another look at the helicopter traffic when it becomes an issue. The time is now. I'm here to oppose the expansion because I've been told by officials that both trauma centers have been landing these larger military hospitals on the current pad and ask that this commission require a legitimate noise and traffic study of the area and not this myopic and attenuated version. I asked several questions at the administrative hearing on this project, and they've gone unanswered. Why isn't the Integrative Noise Model Version 7 required by the FAA for civilian aviation projects not being required? I've provided an example. The Planning Commission is promising no annoying vibrations. A C-weighted study is a requirement of that statement, and none was provided. The Planning Commission states the project will not substantially increase air traffic. Another statement without fact. When asked how many flights the hospital receives, it took several weeks for them to come up with an answer. It's five per month. No log was provided to verify this number because the information was designated as proprietary. Ventura County will continue to use the smaller Bell 407 helicopters, we're told. I've done my own study over the last four months, and there have been 35 flights. That's an average of nine per month. Only 20% were from Ventura County. Mercy and Reach Air make up 70% of the flight. Do they also make that promise to use small helicopters? It was determined a larger helicopter would not increase the noise level from baseline to require mitigation. If you add the events of helicopter landings and takeoffs, remember, each visit is two sound events. This, in this case, it's 18 per month. I believe if you look at it, mitigation is required. There is no mention of receiver height at the Chinese Christian church relative to the test flight. This is important as the main noise producer is downwashed from blades, and I believe the church is above the helipad. Another erroneous measurement. We are assured our property values will not be affected. I know we paid less in the 90s for our home because of the Lynn Road noise and traffic. Remember, that's when Lynn Road commissioned. They had, and they complained, and they said that the Lynn Road noise had turned from a river to a waterfall. What is it now? It is so loud here. And Chris told me at the administrative hearing that the sounds had gotten lower here. You know, the question about, is there a difference between a Blackhawk and a Bell 407? I can answer that question. It's huge. It feels like an earthquake. It does. It really does. Add all these things, the fact that I and my neighbors are no longer considered within 500 feet of this hospital. I live at 2000 Ferndale Place. Since they changed deed in 2013, that's how the hospital is supposedly surrounded by commercial real estate. Just look around. There's a lot of houses. I stumbled onto this project because I've been trying to get increased patrol in this area. We have 41 patrol officers, down from 66 in the 90s when we had two homeless citizens, and Lynn Road was like a waterfall. We deserve a real sound study. We deserve mitigation. I cannot believe that this sound study and this piece of, "Oh, we're just doing it for the good of the world." I'm sorry. I'm a veterinarian. I'm involved in emergency care. I'm involved in the Ventura County Emergency Response Team. I understand. Whenever a helicopter goes over my house, it's an emergency.
You have about 10 seconds.
It doesn't matter if there's a fire. It's an emergency. So I understand the concept. I'd like to see the hospital get legal with these landings, but to bypass the people around the hospital and not be responsible individuals as a hospital is just... It's horrible.
Ms. Martin, you're out of time.
It's horrible.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay. Think about what I...
Understood. We will, of course. We'll go back to staff for response.
We were advised by the applicant that the number of flights... And yes, I'm aware these are helicopters that come in. It's about three to four per week. So those were the numbers that we received from the applicant. We also have to remember that the total amount of trips to the hospital will probably be similar to what it is. I mean, nothing's going to change, except for those few times when they need to land the bigger helicopters. For the most part, you know, Mercy, the county, it's still going to go on as it always has. As far as Ms. Martin being outside the 500-feet notice, I specifically put her on the list because I know she's interested in anything that has to do with the county, I mean, with the hospital. And, you know, we received the noise study, and we accepted what they stated, which was it didn't exceed any of the Thousand Oaks threshold for significant noise. That's it.
Thank you. I was so pushed to get to staff, I forgot there was one other public comment listed on my sheet. Ryan?
That's for 7C.
Oh, then there's not. Okay. Any other staff comments? Okay. Commissioner questions?
Chair Lunt, if I could just jump in. The noise study, when it was prepared, evaluated the existing noise for the helicopter trips today before the new Firehawks are using the site. That was to provide the delta between the noise levels, the CNEL levels, for the existing conditions versus the projected new conditions when the Firehawks visit the site. I just want to make it abundantly clear that these Firehawks will not be visiting the site. The operation that's occurring now, the Bell Hueys that are visiting, or the Bell 407s that are landing on the helipad now, will continue to do so. This is not a hearing of whether or not that will stop or no longer occur. It's what is the difference between the noise levels when these new helicopters, the Firehawks, do actually land on the site? And that's what was evaluated. And that's why it was considered negligible. They looked at the noise levels, the infrequency, the sporadic use of the site during a catastrophic event, a search and rescue mission, and delivery of patients, trauma victims during those events, is what the analysis conducted, provided results on. So it was only during those differences, not in actually the operation today.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions of staff with regard to the follow-up? Not hearing any. We'll go back to the applicant, who has five minutes for rebuttal. Mr. Manning?
I don't think we have any additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and then one last time, the Commission then, for any further Commissioner questions before I close the public hearing? Not hearing, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open the matter up for discussion or a motion. Not everybody wants it.
I will just say one thing. I am concerned about the parking. I didn't get a whole lot of clarification about how much was... How much there was going to be in additional. I just know from my personal experience, at this time, there is not enough parking if you want to visit somebody who is at the hospital. There is a lack of parking. And with all the expansion and then losing something, I just want to get some kind of assurance that there will be enough parking for those people who are trying to see their loved ones at the hospital and those who are trying to go there for, as a patient. That's my comment at this point.
Commissioner McMahon, did you want to ask additional questions to get that clarification? Meaning, do you want me to reopen the public hearing for purposes of clarifying that issue?
Actually, yes. Would you do that, please?
Of course. So we will reopen the public hearing and turn it back to staff with regard to that question.
Yes, I'd just like to add that part of the parking spaces are taken up with the construction workers and their trailers. And those will be gone after, you know, they finish the work. So that section in the northeast corner will be opened up. And in the back where they're expanding the surgery area, I mean, those are going to be, you know, we'll have a little bit room there. Right now, it's all filled with construction.
When did this construction start? Because I was visiting a patient there a little over a year ago, and I had a lot of trouble getting parking.
Yes, it varies during the time. I don't remember exactly when they started construction because they were doing it in phases. So I don't know exactly at what point what they were working on then. But the sort of area of construction has been there for a while, since they've been doing quite a bit of renovation there.
Perhaps we can get the applicant back at the podium to reassure me that there will be more parking than is taken away.
So this is Michael Diorio, the Civil Consultant with Kimley Horn. We did the parking study for the hospital. And I guess I could provide a summary of the parking study. Currently, there are about 933 parking spaces at the hospital. After all of the projects, the ongoing projects, including the helipad, there will actually be a reduction of parking by 22 parking spaces, leaving 911 parking spaces. However, we did, as part of our analysis, a parking occupancy study to basically compare what the city code requires as far as required parking for a hospital versus what the existing conditions are and how much occupied the actual parking is on-site. And that includes the, what we called Zone 5, which is the remote lot. And so as part of our analysis and as part of the hospital's drive to open up more parking spaces for visitors, they've made a push to have hospital staff park in the remote lot, which is at the corner of Lynn and Jan's, I believe. They've illuminated the path from the hospital to the remote lot to allow staff to walk safely at night, as well as providing a shuttle service for hospital staff. And this is all in an effort to have staff park in the remote lot and keep spaces in the parking deck available for visitors. At the end of our analysis, we determined that there is a 6.5% cushion or buffer in parking spaces. Essentially, there are at least 59 parking spaces in addition to what would be required. And so it is just something that the hospital has pushed to improve over the last six months to a year to provide more parking spaces for visitors by having the staff park more in the remote lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that information.
Anything further?
That's all. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question from me on that. So with regard to this project, is it being staggered in a way that it won't start until all the other remodeling that you're doing is finished so that the parking spaces won't be unduly needed?
As far as this project, I know just offhand that the exit discharge expansion area was complete. The amount of parking spaces that were added back for that project exceed those that will be taken away for the helipad project. So net effect would be positive. There wouldn't be all going on at one time.
Okay, and since we reopened, is there any other questions from Commissioners?
Yes, there is.
Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I neglected to ask earlier, what is the estimated amount of time needed for the upgrade of the helipad?
Is that something the applicant would...
For the applicant, yes.
This is Austin speaking. We believe the project will take approximately six to eight months to complete. That's our projected timeline at this point, based on what we know today.
Okay, so six to eight months. And during that period, is there a contingency plan during demolition and construction for using different facilities? Or will the current helipads still be available? How will the county be served during the construction?
Sure. So we are currently working through that plan with the Ventura County Air Unit and our EMS, Ventura County EMS Agency. And those conversations are ongoing to identify a secondary site for the helicopters to land in and then establish the process to ensure patients are transported to the hospital safely.
Okay, so just so I understand, you're saying Los Robles would still be in use, would still be accepting trauma patients, but they would be landing somewhere else temporarily and then brought to the medical center? Is that correct?
That is correct. We would absolutely still be serving the county in every way that we are today. We would simply establish a secondary landing site and transport patients via ambulance.
Thanks very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other Commissioner questions?
No, thank you for opening the meeting for me.
No problem. So we will go ahead and reclose the public hearing and again reopen the floor to Commissioners for comments and/or a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I will do this. Recognizing that we do need the best tools possible for firefighting and for search and rescue, I will move that we adopt the resolution approving special use permit minor modification, SUMN 2020-70422, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the resolution. And I do feel it's important for the region, but we... And I do feel it's important for the region, but we can't, we can't ignore the day-to-day operations and the clientele who use the hospital on a daily basis. So I will make that motion.
And if I may, Chair, just to be clear, this is a recommendation, so you're not approving the project tonight. But just, I understand what you meant. I just want to make sure, clear for the record, that it is a recommendation to City Council. You beat me to it. Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there any other Commissioner comments? I had one brief one, and as Mr. Heager pointed out, this is a recommendation process. I agree with what Commissioner McMahon said, and I will support this. I am concerned with a lot of the things that Ms. Martin put in her documentation. I don't know, again, this is why actually I pointed out, Mr. Manning, my hope is that you did see supplemental packet and you did see her information, and that those issues can be addressed as part of the City Council meeting, at which point this issue will be taken up and all of those issues will be addressed. Anyway, so at this point, I will support that. But again, we strongly suggest that you identify and deal with those issues at the time of the City Council hearing. With that, any other Commissioner comments?
I'd strongly concur with what you just said. I'm, I'm very sympathetic to the comments Ms. Martin made. I certainly would not be happy if I was living as close as she is to the, to the new helipad. And I think she raised many valid questions. I hope we'll continue to look at them. I hope the applicant will take measures to mitigate them. But I'm also cognizant of our fires are getting worse and worse, and they're producing more casualties, and we also need to deal with that as well. So let's hopefully find a way to address all of these issues.
I concur as well. Madam Secretary, go ahead and prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And again, as this is a recommendation, it goes to the City Council, so there is no appeal, period. Moving on to item 7C. Will the clerk please open? Will the clerk please open the public hearing on 7C?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7C, Special Use Permit, SUP 2020-70218, to allow a new entertainment venue in an existing commercial building, including axe-throwing, arcade games, and onsite alcohol sales located at 215 North Moore Park Road, Unit I. And the applicant is The Mighty Axe.
Thank you. And we have Assistant Planner Tabitha McAttee and Planning Manager Carrie Finley.
Good evening, Chair Lanson, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is a request to allow a new entertainment venue, The Mighty Axe, in an existing commercial building located at 215 North Moore Park Road, Unit Number I, in the Jan's Marketplace Shopping Center. The venue will include axe-throwing, virtual reality arcade games, and onsite alcohol In the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2105, in the permitted non-residential use matrix, any request for recreational uses within the community shopping center, C3 Zone, be considered by the Planning Commission. Jan's Marketplace is located between West Wilbur Road and North Moore Park Road and is north of the 101 freeway, shown here on the vicinity map. Here you can see Jan's Marketplace. The subject tenant space is located towards the middle of the shopping center behind the Ulta Beauty Retail Store. The nearest residential area is located 1,300 feet away from the proposed entertainment The space is located within the outdoor mall corridor area of Jan's Marketplace between two existing restaurants, Lucky's Doghouse and Crazy King Kong Sushi. Other commercial recreational uses currently located in Jan's Marketplace are Dave &amp; Buster's and Defy Extreme Air Sports, formerly Dojo Boom. The proposed entertainment venue will have six independent bays for axe-throwing activities and separate areas within the space for bar patrons and virtual reality games. Each axe-throwing bay is 230 square feet and contains two targets each. Every independent bay has protective fencing for customer safety. The two virtual reality rooms are 196 square feet each and contain eight game screens total. There will be a separate bar area with wall-mounted TVs and seating for patrons and beer sales. This project meets all development standards. This slide shows the proposed venue's frontage and the other, on the other side of the planter in the first photo. The tenant space was, the tenant space was formerly a beauty supply store and salon. The facade faces the back of the Ulta Beauty Retail Store, shown in the second photo. And this is looking towards the outdoor mall areas, along with neighboring storefronts. Here is a site plan diagram showing the shopping center with the tenant space highlighted in red. The existing tenant space is 3,200 square feet and will contain the recreational activities and bar. The shared parking areas highlighted in blue are shown here. There are 2,147 total shared parking spaces provided for the shopping center and their current uses. There is currently an excess of 769 shared spaces. The proposed entertainment venue will require 19 parking spaces. Therefore, the parking supply meets the city's municipal code parking demand provisions. And this arrow is pointing to the small green highlighted area adjacent to the tenant space, representing the common area public restroom that is available for customers. This restroom access is located approximately 300 feet from the tenant space, around the corner from the proposed venue. There is also a single occupancy restroom available inside the venue for both customers and employees to use. Both patrons and new customers will check in at the front door as they enter the venue for either axe-throwing or virtual reality activities. A staff member will check their ID cards, provide wristbands, and direct them to the next station. No outside acts will be allowed in axe-throwing activities on the premises. Consumption of alcohol is not permitted in designated axe-throwing areas according to the draft operations and safety plan. And the Thousand Oaks Police Department has reviewed this project and the draft operations and safety plan. This is the proposed entertainment venue floor plan. After checking in at the main entrance, customers will be either directed to one of the axe-throwing bays indicated here with the green arrows or to a virtual reality activity room shown here in blue. The bar area is located towards the front of the venue labeled here in purple. This interior elevation shows one of the axe-throwing bays and the target areas. And these are some concept photos provided by the applicant, showing the ideas for axe-throwing and virtual reality spaces for the proposed venue. For environmental review, with the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is Class 1 exemption of Section 15301 for existing facilities. No expansion for the existing structure is proposed. And the project includes a request to allow axe-throwing, arcade games, and onsite alcohol sales within the existing commercial building. Also, this project's location is within an urbanized area, which is zoned for this type of use, where all necessary public services and facilities are available. Staff concludes that the request will not have a detrimental impact to the surrounding commercial area, since this is an incidental use to the venue and the nearest residence is 1,300 feet away from, away north of West Wilbur Road. The proposed use should not generate noise, parking, or traffic impacts greater than those associated with the existing commercial activity. And the proposed axe-throwing use will contribute to the community by providing a unique recreational experience to the area and will complement the existing retail uses in the shopping center. Also, staff has received one letter of support for this proposal. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve this project based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. Staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAttee. I'm assuming Commissioners have questions, so let's hear them. Commissioner questions?
All right, I'll go first. My biggest question is, is I, I, and I just want to know what the rules for the city are, but we're talking about sharp-bladed objects flying around and alcohol. And I just wanted to know if we have anything in our city ordinances covering allowing people to operate dangerous weapons while, while consuming beverages for entertainment.
I certainly think there's, there's nothing in our code regarding weapons of that sort in a commercial setting in which you are actually in a recreational kind of setting. We certainly have, obviously, penal code and code, code, city code ordinances regarding weapons of any kind that are in the public. And as you will note in the conditions and as was discussed earlier by staff, you cannot bring axes or any other type of axe-throwing or weapon-throwing device to this facility. It's only the ones that are going to be used there. That was one of the concerns I had initially, and it was clear that they don't allow you to bring your own equipment, like, unlike bowling or golf or something of that nature. It's, you have to use what's there. So I think we have that kind of control there.
Commissioner Bus, any other questions?
I think, yeah, that covers it for me, as far as, as far as that issue.
Okay. Other Commissioner questions?
Yes, this is Kevin Cohen.
Commissioner Cohen, go ahead.
Thank you. This will be open to the applicant when, after he speaks, but I'd like to know more about onsite security, if there will be onsite security, and more about the role of the axe expert in helping to guide the customers onsite.
I will defer to the applicant on those details. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, anything, any other questions of staff?
None of staff at this time.
Any other Commissioner questions? Then I will ask a few. If you could go back in your presentation to the depiction of what the situation is supposedly going to look like, that would be great. There we go. That was it. So this was provided by the applicant, correct? Because from what you had said, it sounded as if the bays, whatever you want to call them, will be separated from alcohol and other things. And again, the bottom picture, I, I'm not looking specifically if they have drinks, but it seems like that's an open area of drinking and eating. Is that, so is that would be an actual representation, or is that probably not accurate?
This is just a concept photo, but they did provide plans to indicate that there would be a, a higher, like, bar top table, that the group that is throwing the axes, they can take a break and go back and have a snack or drink their beer, but not inside the base. It's not permitted inside the base.
Do you know if these are, and again, I'm not exactly a expert. Are these standard-issued axes, or are they specially created axes for this process?
I will have the applicant answer that question. I'm not sure about the details of the axe.
One, one last kind of general concept from that view. Will people from the mall, as they're walking by between the, I think it's the sushi restaurant and down, will they be able to see the axe-throwing from the actual mall walkway?
I wouldn't think so, because the bays, you would have to walk around the corner. But they are, it's a fencing, so maybe it's just like a mesh that you could see through it. I would have the applicant answer that, because the elevations that were provided to me, it doesn't indicate which bay you're looking through, whether it's the first bay looking down the aisle.
And then I guess lastly, and I'll, I'll pick up on what Commissioner Bus may have been kind of looking at, is there any additional bonding, licensing, any other requirement by virtue of this unique type of recreational activity that the city would require?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any specifically, certainly, yeah, I'm not aware of any specific.
With that, we will then, any other Commissioner questions? Okay, with that, we will go to the applicant, who will have 15 minutes. And I believe we have Mr. Ryan Bradley. Mr. Bradley, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi. Just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for allowing me to present this to the Commission. Thank you for your time. It's greatly appreciated. I'm a longtime resident of the Canaho Valley. I currently live in Simi Valley. I'm a father of two teenage girls, one's attending Westlake High School this year. I'm a youth sports, involved in a lot of youth sports, including, I'm a head soccer coach for the AYSO United Rancho Canaho Soccer Club. And I'm an entrepreneur, so I, I have several businesses that I've opened in the last several years. And this is just one concept that we wanted to open in Thousand Oaks, namely for the reason of bringing fun, alternative entertainment options to Thousand Oaks that make it family-friendly, where, you know, kids can come do virtual reality, kids over 12 can throw axes, and, you know, families and friends can get together to, I know, it's a, it's essentially a social gathering place. And in this time of COVID, you know, we had plans to open this much earlier, but it's definitely got delayed because of the current COVID situation. And, you know, that's something that we're, we're monitoring and hoping will end in 2021 at some point where we can open this and be the type of social gathering entertainment place that we vision this, envision this place being. So, let's see, I wanted to address a couple, a couple of things that you guys talked about. You know, the, the two primary entertainment functions here are axe-throwing and virtual reality. You know, the axe-throwing, it's, it's catching on in popularity throughout the nation. The first store, the first indoor axe-throwing venue opened in 2016. Now there are over 300 locations in the United States. Since 2016, there's been a couple, a couple of official, like, leagues that have formed. One's called the World Axe-Throwing League. It's actually headquartered in San Diego, California. And then there's also a, a World Axe-Throwing League. These organizations put together, you know, protocols and safety, and they sell things like axes. So some of the standard axes that we would be using are official axes from the World Axe-Throwing League. They're just standardized, and this is a, this is a real sport now. There's actually international axe-throwing competitions. There's actually, ESPN has picked up the World Axe-Throwing Championships. So you can go, you can watch axe-throwing on ESPN channels on occasion. It's kind of a rarity these days, but it is developing into a real sport, much like bowling is. And, you know, I think the safety record of this type of activity is, is really good too. I've spoken to a couple of insurance companies as we're, as we've been developing this idea, we've reached out to insurance companies to talk to them about what this takes. And one of the companies that I have a letter from, they, they insure over 250 axe-throwing organizations in the US, and they've, they, they're not familiar with any lawsuits that have ever occurred from any accidents that have happened so far at an axe-throwing destination. So, you know, I, I kind of liken this to bowling. I mean, bowling is pretty kind of a dangerous sport too, when you think about hurling a 16-pound ball down a lane, and there's, there's alcohol involved there too. But in speaking with the City of Thousand Oaks and Officer Brady, who I think is also on this call too, we've come up with some measures to try to keep this relative, you know, relatively safe. And being a, being a father and a community, community, community member in, in the Canadian And, uh, being a, being a father and a, uh, community, community, community member in, in the Canaho Valley, I don't want this to evolve into something that is, you know, based on really just alcohol and drinking beer. I want this to be a social gathering place where people can have fun, corporations can have corporate events, families can get together for birthday parties, or friends can get together for birthday parties. And that's really my intent. I mean, I think there's a need for entertainment activities in the area. And, uh, if you look in Southern California, like from, from, uh, the valley down to San Diego, there's probably about 30 of these axe throwing places, uh, just in Los Angeles County and San Diego County and Orange County alone. So I'm hoping to bring the first one, um, to the Thousand Oaks area. So, um, the other component of it is the virtual reality component. Uh, there's been a few virtual reality arcades pop up here and there. I think there was one at the Thousand Oaks Mall. Our virtual reality arcade, it's all going to be pretty, the picture kind of represented what we were doing, but we're kind of focusing on virtual reality escape rooms and kind of arcade games that a group of people can get together and go into the same virtual reality experience. So, um, so yeah, there's a, and let me see if I can answer a couple of your questions that you had. I already addressed the axes and the standard axes. There would be a standard set of axes we would, uh, employ at this facility. And then, um, you asked about, um, the role of security and the experts in this venue. So in, in speaking with Officer Brady, um, he had a recommendation that at least for the first couple of months, we hire a security guard to, uh, monitor the flow of people, you know, assess the, the people coming in, just be there in case anything got contentious, which I don't imagine it would. I mean, um, like I said, the, the type of audience we're going to market to and we're going to try to attract is more the family and, uh, and not, um, you know, the younger population that might be looking for a place to go party at. Um, let's see, and then, uh, the role of the experts, um, is we're going to train our employees to understand all of the safety, uh, operations of axe throwing, teach people how to, uh, throw an axe, teach people what the rules are, monitor what people are wearing, make sure it's just a safe environment, and look out for mischief and guide, guide the groups into their axe throwing experience and just monitor that they're doing things correctly. Cause there's certain, there's certain rules that, um, that guests need to follow, including, you know, not crossing a certain line until both axes have been thrown, and then you can retrieve your axes, keeping drinks outside of the axe throwing area, keeping all the axes within the axe throwing area, and simple things like that. And then just throwing techniques as well. So that's, uh, basically, um, all I had to say. I'm happy to answer any more of your questions if you have, uh, anything else you'd like to address with me.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Uh, you referenced a, uh, officer that's also, I don't have that person on my sheet, so I didn't know if that was somebody that's part of your presentation or is it just a public speaker?
Pete, Tabitha?
I, I, I understand. I guess he's, he's a T O P D officer, but I didn't know, because I don't have him on my sheet as being a speaker. So I didn't know if he was part of the applicant's presentation or.
Just for questions only?
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we will go to those questions. Commissioners, what questions do you have for the applicant?
Commissioner Newman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a little bit of, for the applicant, a few questions about the business. Is this part of a franchise operation?
It is not, um, hi, uh, it is not. This is just, and I, I, I have a couple of businesses. Uh, one of them's an escape room up in the Big Bear area, Big Bear Lake. And I kind of monitor and hear activities of what's, what are trends and what, what people are, what type of entertainment activities people are looking into. And this is just something I'm starting on my own. I'm starting my own brand, um, with, with this venue. And, uh, who knows, it could turn into more than one eventually. But, uh, since I live in this area and I feel like, you know, talking to all my friends and acquaintances, they're always looking for new things to do in the area, and I thought we'd, uh, try this here first.
Okay, so then I know I'm speaking to the expert when I ask my next question about the safety guide that was part of our packet. Um, one of the things that jumped out at me in that guide was a recommendation that there be, um, a ratio of, I think, one, what you'd call an expert to every 20 patrons. And if I'm counting right, I think I see six, uh, bays, or I'm not sure what the correct term is for the alleys where the axes are being thrown. Um, so assuming two customers in each of six bays, that's 12 people already. Um, and there are possibly eight others somewhere around the rest of the establishment. How does one expert, uh, look after all those patrons? Or do you plan to hire, uh, to have more experts per, a lower ratio of experts for customers at this location?
Sure. Sure, so it's, um, it's going to depend on the evenings, I think, you know, Friday and Saturday nights are going to be pretty busy. Uh, we're following some of the guidelines that have been established by other axe throwing venues. And, um, typically you can get up to six to eight people per one target. So while a couple, while two people are throwing axes at the targets in one bay, um, so one bay has two targets, so there's 12 targets in total. Uh, you can have up to six people throwing on one target. It's much like darts, kind of where you have, you know, a series of people who can throw darts at a target. And, uh, so that's how most of the other establishments are set up. And that's probably the, the kind of direction we're going to take in occupying our axe throwing, um, lanes. And so we would assign, um, assign experts based on the number of people that come in. Sometimes people might rent a bay and it's only two people throwing. Sometimes they might come in with a party of day 12, and they're also occupying one whole bay with the two targets. So that's the, I think in general, the ratio we were, um, looking to hire experts in and make sure we have enough expert, experts to handle the, the flow of people. But they may be working with like two groups at the same time, just monitoring the flow between the groups, answering questions if there's questions, seeing if they need help, learning how to throw their axes.
So if it is a busy, um, Friday or Saturday night and there are, I think you just said six or eight people per bay, even if there are just two people throwing at the targets at a time, um, what would the ratio be of staff to, to patrons?
So, so, um, I mean, like, we're going to have different staffs in different locations. So we're going to have people behind the bar, people, uh, you know, introducing, uh, like hostesses, and then the experts. So on a busy night, if we've got six people, uh, or tw- say 10 people in each bay, we've got 60 people throwing axes, we would have three experts, um, that are working that night that are exclusively focused on helping people get acquainted with the sport and monitoring, uh, how they're throwing those sports. So there would be, you know, one expert for two bays in that situation.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, I think I understand, but just, just to double check. I think you're saying, um, that at peak times, there would be at most, uh, one expert, and that's, that's what I'm asking about. Above and beyond the, the bartending staff and other staff, but the, the, the axe expert or expert, as you, you call them, um, there'd be one of those per each of two bays. Is that, is that about right?
I think, I think at the peak times, that's about right. So we would probably have three experts on, on a busy Friday or Saturday night.
All right, thanks very much. Nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Other commissioner questions?
Commissioner McMahon?
Go ahead.
Um, so in order to staff, would this be a reservation only, uh, type of situation so that you know that you're going to have 12 people at this bay and eight at another?
Yes, uh, it's all reservation based. Uh, there's a lot of software programs. There's, there's one in particular we would use that we use for our escape room business that allows us to kind of plan and know what the busy periods are going to be. Yeah, so.
So you'll know how many people you need?
Yes, and then from my experience, uh, so I, in part of understanding how this business work, I've gone through a lot, to a lot of operations to see how they work. Uh, Friday, Saturday nights are pretty much the entire day. It's very, very busy and, uh, their days are completely booked. So they're, uh, they've got, you know, the maximum amount, amount of employees during those times.
Okay, and then you mentioned that, um, you had to be over 12 in order to throw an axe. 12 seems young. Would they, do you require an adult for a 12-year-old?
Yeah, um, so in my experience, uh, and from what I've learned, there's a lot of axe throwing facilities that are the ages 10 and over. Uh, my daughter, I have a daughter who just turned 13 and, uh, she's on the, uh, the, the smaller side, and, uh, she can throw an axe. So she's done it, you know, when, at, at the age of 11, she, I think she threw her first axe, and she's had a lot of fun with it. I thought 12 was the appropriate age to kind of cut this off at, but yeah, kids can't go in there and throw axes themselves. They have to be accompanied by a parent. The parent would though be out of the throwing area when, um, you know, a, a, a 12-year-old or a teenager is throwing the axe. So under the ages of 18, um, parents have to accompany the, the, the children if they're going to be there throwing axes.
And they basically wait in the bar area?
No, the parents would, if, if they're under 18, the parents have to be in the area of the axe throwing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Any other commissioner questions?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Bus.
All right, so, um, so we've established that, uh, parents or a guardian needs to be there when they're throwing axes. Uh, what about the VR rooms? Um, is there, is there an age limit for that? And is there, uh, brunt or guardian accompaniment required?
Yeah, no, so to give a better description of the VR area, they're more like areas. There are no walls. Um, in, in the diagram, it showed the little squares for the VR areas. And those are going to be kind of open areas where everyone can kind of see the person doing VR. It's actually kind of entertaining to watch someone do VR. And then you can see what they're doing on the screen above their head. You can see what they're looking at. So it's kind of a new concept in VR too, because most VR, you're kind of isolated. But we're trying to make this a fun environment. You know, some people might not want to do it because they're shy and they see that open area. But, um, they're open areas, you'll be able to see all the way down that, uh, looking at all the people playing VR, and they're going to be most, a lot of times in the same environment doing, uh, similar activities. So that age limit, we've, we've, we have it eight years old. Uh, VR takes some, you know, getting used to the goggles and some coordination. And, uh, but there's a lot of games and a lot of arcades that are, um, that are kind of targeted towards, uh, kids of eight to 12 years old. So we felt like if, uh, some adults wanted to go through axes, maybe their children wanted to play VR instead of even playing axes if they're 12 or 13. So, um, you know, just another option for, and it, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of adult kind of activities in the VR, uh, meaning like, uh, more shooting type games and things are more, and escape rooms. So I'm in the escape room business myself, and there's a lot of virtual escape rooms that are kind of targeted more towards adults. Nothing graphic though, or nothing that would, uh, be, you know, um, not appropriate for kids to see. It's just they're more kind of geared towards adult video games.
I got you. So, um, so there is no requirement for children to come in and play the VR stuff to have a parent with them? That is, is that what you said?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think in that situation, you know, uh, parents need to be in the facility, but they don't have to stay right beside them while they're doing VR.
Oh, okay, so, so, uh, you would need somebody over 18 with, or, or a parent or guardian?
Yeah.
Children. I, I was just trying to figure that out because I know you're serving alcohol there. I'm trying to find if this is a safe place for teenagers to hang out in your estimation, or if this is a place that it's more family oriented, where you're going to want parents there with their, with their.
Sure.
Children.
Sure, so in, in my vision, I think the, the age of the average guest is going to evolve over throughout the day, you know, starting, you know, in the afternoons, it's probably going to be more VR, you know, some birthday parties, some families. As we go into the later evenings, I think it evolves more into an adult place. And, you know, of course, after probably eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night, it's probably all adults in the facility. So, you know, I think the environment changes, but yes, we do serve elves. We also will be serving sodas and snacks and allowing people to bring food in from neighboring restaurants as well. So, so, um, those, yeah, I think it's an environment that we're trying to create, not just for adults and not make it like a bar that people are sitting there, you know, drinking and watching games, but participating in activities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Bus? I'll take that as a no.
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cohen, did you have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Bradley answered many of them. I think the last question I didn't hear was pricing. Is it, are you pricing by the hour, by the use of the event? How does pricing work?
Sure, so, um, the VR stations and the axe throwing are all by the hour, so by the session. Um, we're likely going to be an hour-long session for both of those facilities. Beer will not be priced by the hour though.
Then we would all, we would all be experts, I think.
In regards to the, any leagues, will you host any, uh, axe throwing leagues at your facility?
Yeah, that's, uh, we, we definitely, uh, that's something of interest. Um, the, the World Axe Throwing League, uh, has an active league. So if you get a group of people that become enthusiasts for the sport, you can kind of fill some of your slower times with leagues, much kind of like the bowling alleys do. So bowling alley leagues, you know, they're usually happening, you know, in the afternoons or early evenings on Saturday and Sunday or even during the week. So, uh, yeah, definitely, it depends on the enthusiasm we garner for the sport, but, uh, we'll definitely probably be developing some leagues as well.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioner Cohen?
That is all.
Okay, I, I just had a few, uh, to follow up on, uh, Mr. Bradley. Initially is, uh, the view. So if you're walking in the mall, will you be able to see anybody throwing axes or would you just see the bar?
I, I think you will be able to see people throwing axes. Uh, they are, um, they're like, uh, the cages. So most of these axe throwing places that are in, uh, other cities, they've been brought into warehouses, and it's a really industrial type look with like chain link fencing like you see in a backyard. With this concept, we're trying to go with a higher level of atmosphere. And we're, we're putting in these, um, kind of tougher, nicer looking fences that you would probably see, uh, more at a, uh, industrial manufacturing facility. So they, they look nice, they're painted black with like nylon coating on them. But you would be able to see down the lanes. Part of that is for our safety too. So as the proprietor of this and as my managers of the facility are monitoring activities, they kind of want to see what's going down, on down those lanes. So that's important to see if people are, you know, um, goofing off or throwing their axes inappropriately. You can quickly identify who those people are and take appropriate actions. But people from the street for sure will be able to see down probably the first couple of lanes. As it gets further down and those meshes of the fences start overlapping each other, it might be, get more difficult. But yeah, I think they will be able to see it from the street. You know, the whole front of that venue is glass. So, uh, you know, we want people to walk by and see all the activities going on in there and be interested and want to come in and see what it's all about.
I, I've actually, uh, I saw the one, I think it's, I don't know if it's West Hollywood or, or thereabouts. There's one in the city that I, I've seen a lot of the pictures and videos, and it's a very, as you said, very industrial, very hard chain link fence. I'm looking at the pictures now, uh, that the staff put up on, on the screen here. And again, one of the pictures, and again, I don't know if you provided this, actually shows like a Plexiglas, but you're not going to have that, you're actually going to, there it is, that you're going to actually have chain link fencing, correct?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, these are, you know, concepts from other companies that we saw. Uh, ours is going to be this like industrial, not, it's, what do they say? It's like a commercial fence. It's not like your backyard fence, but it's a fence that goes all the way down. And I think it, if I recall, it's like 12 feet high on the sides to be protective of, you know, a potential wild axe.
Uh, are you selling any of the products as part of the operation?
A, a lot of companies do sell axes. It wasn't my plan to sell axes at this point. I mean, um, I, you know, I think I'm interested in the comment you had about the city code and ordinance about, you know, public weapons and stuff like that. It wasn't our intention to. It wasn't our intention to sell anything, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of the existing axe-throwing places do sell souvenirs and axes that people can take home, but that wasn't part of our initial plan.
And, and again, looking at one of the other pictures, it shows the bays and again, a bunch of family members. And again, I think the staff referenced it. The distinction between where the alcohol is gonna be, is it just behind a table, or is there a separate divider?
So, so that picture on the bottom there, where they have the separation, ours are gonna be a little more completing. So, yeah, this is the diagram. There's only one place to really enter the axe-throwing lanes where those arrows are. The, the thing that looks like the two-by-four on the back, that's kind of a ledge where people can put their drinks and their food or their snacks. And people will be standing behind that, looking in and watching their, their family members or friends throw the axes. So it'll just be where the arrow is, where you go in there, there'll only be two people in there at one time. Everybody else will be standing behind left and right of those arrows.
And there's specific lines that they're supposed to stay between when they have the axe, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so that one, that one little line that's halfway through, that's the axe-throwing line, which you're not supposed to go in front of. And then that backwards post is kind of the, the maximum you would really stand pack to throw an axe. But that's, that's kind of a long ways from the target.
Okay, and the VR room, again, going back to that picture, it looks like you have a, and again, it looks interesting because you have a blue-color-ish thing, and then the TV screens that people walk in by can see what they're seeing. Are they gonna be able to hear it as well? I mean, is there gonna be the noise of what's going through, or is that gonna be silenced?
I, I think we have to figure out the, the, all the different noises that are going on in the facility. The, the people playing VR will have headphones on and then VR headset. And we will probably be having some, you know, some music, you know, just throughout the environment, which then we'll have to be selective on what we're playing from the VR screens. You know, there, there's also a lot of VR competitions where, I don't know if any of you have done VR, but there's a lot of games, like Beat Saber. It's a really fun game where you got these sabers and you're trying, anyway, won't go into those details. But there's competitions that VR companies have, much like a league, where you get a bunch of enthusiasts together, and then you would probably focus on the VR, turn up the music for the, the, for the Beat Saber and pay attention more to that area. So I think there's a lot of conceptual things we'd like to do. We're not sure how some of those leagues and stuff will develop, but it's all, all gonna depend on the enthusiasm we get from our patrons.
Understood. All right, those are all the questions I had. Any other commissioner questions? Not hearing any. I don't have any public comments, so we will go back to staff for any comments they may have.
No further comments, Chair.
So, Mr. Bradley, there's nothing for you to rebut, but instead you had anything further you wanted to say. You can actually have additional few minutes.
No further comment. Appreciate your time.
Okay, again, just last time for commissioners. Any further questions of staff or the applicant? Not hearing any. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open the floor to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
Yes, this is Commissioner Cohen. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to adopt the resolution approving special use permit 2020-70218 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the resolutions. I'd like to thank Mr. Bradley. I think this is a, a complemental use to this, this area with Dave and Buster's, the cinema there. It's a unique opportunity, and I think it brings a unique experience to that, this area. And I like the idea of having this entertainment option in the community and, and providing some food opportunities with the shared uses nearby. So I recommend we, we move forward to adopting this special use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Other commissioner comments?
I'll speak.
Go ahead.
I, I, I share Mr. Cohen's enthusiasm for, for this venue. I'm very excited. It's just up the street from me. And I, I'm looking forward to seeing what this looks like once, once it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bus. Any other commissioner comments? Then I'll add my own. Mr. Bradley, I want to thank you as well. This is a, a very interesting idea, and again, it adds creativity. I actually, from in my younger years, worked in Westwood Village, and this is the kind of thing that I think would be a fabulous kind of concept back then in terms of creating energy, excitement, and opportunities. Obviously, I'm, I'm concerned about some of the issues, obviously, the visual issues in terms of what it may represent. And obviously, there's an attempt, or, or concern with regard to certain people, how they may view this process. And I don't want it to, to lead to other potential negative consequences in terms of how people may react. That's, that's tough to sit there and try to balance. But at the end of the day, this is a business that fits within the confines of the codes and permits. Again, I, I thank you so much for, for bringing a great idea to the city, and I just hope you're able to open it soon, considering all the different issues we're going through. So with that, Madam Secretary, please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
As this is an approval, any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within ten days. With that, we will then move on to item eight, department reports. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Chair. There are none this evening.
I know it said none, but I had to go to you anyway, just to see if there had changed. Item nine, commissioner comments and 1234 reports.
Commissioner Newman?
Go ahead, Mr., Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to call attention to the completion of the recent community attitude survey, specifically a couple of items that were, that touched on our housing issues. Nearly fifty percent of survey respondents said, or think that there's too little middle-income housing in our community. And sixty percent of, of us perceive homelessness to have increased just in the past three years. The other thing is that when the question was put out about what, what specifically would you change to improve Thousand Oaks, the top answer was, well, I'm really not sure. But the next answer after that, and, and this is consistently the case over many, many years of these surveys, is to limit growth and to preserve our open spaces. So those were the parts of the, the survey. There, there are many different aspects, and I encourage the public to read the, the whole survey, but, but there are parts of it that touch on our housing issues, and those are very much top of mind for our residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other commissioner comments? Then I will add a brief one of mine. Looking at the VC emergency we had over the weekend, two hundred and, I can't think, it was sixty-five new infections. We're trying to get to sixty a day or less, which actually gets us with the infection number that we need to get under seven per one-hundred thousand people in order to get from purple to red in terms of the virus level. We're so close in terms of getting that number open, our number down, so we can actually then have some establishments reopen, at least on a twenty-five percent basis, anywhere from places of worship to restaurants, everything else. So again, citizens of TO, please try to find ways to minimize the chances of getting the infection so we can actually then hopefully all help our businesses reopen. The second thing I wanted to briefly point out is I got this in the mail today, which is the general election pamphlet with regard to all of the ballot initiatives. This is overwhelming. This is going to be one of the most influential ballot initiative process that I've ever seen, that will have things that will affect us all in the city. Everything from a split roll to rent control, to seventeen-year-olds being able to vote, to carrying your property tax over at fifty-five. Everything you can think of is in here, so please read this carefully. Go through it, make sure you understand it, and more, most importantly, vote. With that, we will then go to Mr. Parker, number ten, for staff update.
Thank you again, Chair. In terms of updated announcements, we don't have any this evening. In terms of the planning commission, we have meeting schedules, both meetings in October. We'll be in touch with you shortly in regards to the October twelfth meeting, and if that'll proceed or not.
With that said, we will adjourn to the potential October twelfth, two thousand twenty meeting. Good night, TO.
Good night.